Good evening. Welcome to the Regular Planning Commission Meeting, Grand Blank Township, October 6, 2022. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening. We have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Yacho, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bush, and our zoning, planning, administrator extraordinaire, Mr. Jeremy Smith. Word is that our planning consultant will be running, is running a little bit late, but should be here. First item on the agenda would be approval of the agenda, and I understand there's a change?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to talk to the applicant for, under Old Business 6A, Zoning Case 675. He'd like to table that to a future date. No date specific, just future date. We're hoping next month, but it may be December, or this may not happen at all.
Need a motion to do that, or?
I don't think we need a motion.
All right, we can take that one off the agenda then? Do we just take it off, or we need to table? Other changes?
No other changes at this time. You need to make a, you make a motion to approve the agenda as, yep, yes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended by Mr. Yacho, support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next item was approval of the minutes from September 1, 2022. Mr. Secretary?
And Mr. Chairman, after reviewing the draft of the meeting minutes, I find everything to be in order, so therefore unless somebody has a comment, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as published in front of us.
Support. All right, motion by Mr. Banderski to approve the minutes from September 1, support by Mr. Bush. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment if there's anyone that wants to address the Planning Commission about anything that is not on the agenda. We do have a number of zoning, these text amendments, and we also have the special land use that's on our agenda as well. If anyone would like to, no? Okay, we'll close the comment portion. Move on to correspondence. We have at our desk here something from Row Professional Services regarding a presentation coming up later in the month.
There's a flyer at, on the table where you have the agendas. The Pioneer Days and Cemetery Ghost Walk is this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Perry
All right, any other correspondence?
None.
All right, so that would take us right to item, we're gonna skip, we're gonna go to item 7A, Special Land Use, Public Hearing, Eden Prairie, applying for specialized housing in non-single family district. Is there someone that's gonna wanna make a presentation, or can you give us a general idea of what, the reason you're here?
The reason why we're here is we're going, I'm scared to come out.
Excuse me, would you please step to the podium and state your name and address?
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Ogundike, and I'm the owner of 5497 Saginaw Road Home and in Grand Blank Township. The plan is to use that facility for a 12-bed assisted living for mentally ill and developmentally disabled clients, and there will be two units on the property. One will contain six people, and the other side will accommodate six people. And we went through the, at your last meeting, we discussed the protocols and the reason why we're asking it, and my architect and the planning administrator, Mrs. Smith, they've been going back and forth on discussing those, and they are working together to make sure we meet the requirements that the township is asking for. So I'm just here for the airing and for any questions that you guys may have. I'm not the expert, I'm just the owner.
Anyone have any questions before we go to Jeremy? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sit down if you'd like.
This is case number SLU 22-006 for 5497 South Saginaw Street. It's approximately .61 acres. The applicant is Eden Prairie Residential Care. The zoning is general commercial. The proposed use of 5497 South Saginaw will be to construct a residential facility that provides rehabilitation services and other care and treatment to adults diagnosed with developmental intellectual disabilities and are not able to live independently. Housing in non-single-family district OSPO and GC is regulated as a special land use and require additional approval beyond site plan review. The specific standards for housing in non-resident, or in non-single-family district in the GC are as follows. Number one, specialized housing facilities shall have two arterial road access. This was taken care of at the ZBA on 927, and they were granted for only one access point onto Saginaw Street. Item number two, a minimum of 500 square feet of open space per bed with a minimum open space of 5,000 square feet. This item has been met. Number three, truck delivery is only during daytime hours between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and the applicant has assured us that that will be adhered to, and so that item has been Planning Zoning Department would support a recommendation for approval based on the following reasons. The requested special land use is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and number two, the requested special land use standards for housing in non-single-family districts have been met.
Banderski?
Jeremy, in your opening statement there, did you say it's treatment for non-adults?
It will be for adults. There was a, the original application was just for minors.
Okay.
The applicant has indicated now it will be for adults, not minors.
We can change our...
Please.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know you don't have a site plan in front of you, but we're working towards that. There's some few items that may require another variance that we're working on, so that's why there isn't anything in your packet today. We don't have a finalized version yet, and then the, go to the Site Plan Review Committee once it's ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coulter?
I have a concern, basically, I guess. I mean, I appreciate what you're doing in terms of trying to provide residential services for people with, adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities, but it seems like these uses would be much more appropriate in residential or even multifamily-type neighborhoods instead of in a general commercial area on a very busy street. I mean, when you think of, you know, general commercial, you certainly don't think of residential, and certainly not residential for people with disabilities who need constant supervision, but, I mean, I assume they're not gonna be in the house all day, you know? Go ahead, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
This is an existing home that they're remodeling. It was a blighted property. It's two or three doors down from the Township Hall here on Saginaw Street going towards...
Yeah, I know where it is.
So it's an existing home, so it's legal non-conforming already, so he's just adding to that use already. It was already a home, it was being used as a home, and it was blighted for a decade or more, from my understanding. So what he's trying to accomplish is just do the rehab facility on the existing home, and he's adding to it a little bit. As you can see, if you've been to the site, they're adding a second story to it and making more room for more beds, so.
But it still requires a special land use because it's a, oh, because that's what the zoning ordinance says.
Right.
And as a general rule, special land uses, one of the standards is they have to be consistent with the intent of the zoning district. And this, that's my problem. This is a general commercial, I mean, it would be great if it was in a residential, you know, if they had found a residential home in a residential neighborhood, but this is on Saginaw Street in a general commercial area. Apparently, no one else has a concern.
Is the area going to be fenced, I guess, or is there...
One of the requirement for the, like Ms. Coulter was saying, one of the requirement for State of Michigan, and this is a federal use, this is, you know, allowed by FHA policy and rehabilitation law. One of the requirement is you can land, put in your necessary fence. These people have to have freedom. Even though they are mentally illness, they are by developmental disability, their freedom of navigating is very, very important. And also, Ms. Coulter, you were talking about, you know, a busy road and all those things. I've got two of these homes on Welsh Boulevard in two places, and they're in a busy traffic area that vehicles goes back and forth. Most of our clients, they need intense supervision, so they will not stray to the street. Their safety is very, very critical to what we are doing, and as the administrator said, this is being residential. And the rule of the federal government is not to create this kind of facility any differently. That's why it's two units, one for six, just like a regular home, and the other side for six units. So it's a duplex, like you said. The home was being used for similarly, and I think it was a duplex also from the way it was designed.
Okay.
It was a duplex. So we're not changing the application of the home. So this, as some of Ms. Coulter's self-concern, it is still residential, and it's still designed to satisfy the need of, the need of, either of us to care, which is granted by the, you know, Supreme Court ruling in 1988 by Homestead Act. This home should be treated as any other thing. And this home had a living facility. We are not changing the intent of the usage. So I hear what you're saying, Ms. Coulter, but we are not changing the intention of the use. It's usually a duplex, and we're using it for a duplex, and the federal rehabilitation act allows six-bedroom facility anywhere in the State of Michigan, anywhere in the United States. This is supported by federal rehabilitation act. So we are not changing anything that is not being done to that property.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was at the BZA meeting when we approved it, so just to kinda discuss a little bit on item one, we granted the access for one arterial road because it was a five-lane Saginaw Street. We didn't feel like, you know, two small roads. Saginaw Street's just as, we thought, just as well-suited for this type of use. Now personally, you know, I've lived in Grand Blank my whole life, and that house has been there pretty much my whole life. I don't know how long it's been blighted, but I know in one of the master plans that I was involved with when I was on the board, we talked about Saginaw Street and what Saginaw Street looks like, especially on this side of town. Another thing that we talked about at BZA was, we finally have an applicant coming in to take a property that's blighted, and it's gonna make it nice. And the other thing we talked about was it's .6 acres, and it's its own commercial. How long are we gonna have to look at this house? Because no one's gonna put anything on .6 acres. So that's why we thought it was a great thing and why we approved it for one access road.
Anyone else like to comment, or? Mr. Yacho?
Addressing Mrs. Coulter's comment, that it's usually in a residential area was where we place these type of facilities, but most of our residents, I don't think, would want this type of facility in their residential area for their home, you know, for their neighbor. So I think it's appropriate.
Anyone else?
Just another comment or maybe a question.
Sure.
Because I had thought that it was sort of the policy of the State Department of Health and Human Services to promote these types of residential facilities for, you know, people with disabilities or whatever in residential neighborhoods, you know, because that, yeah, and avoid putting them in isolated areas, you know? If they're, if it's a residential use, which it is, it should be in a residential neighborhood. And because historically, these types of homes have been, you know, zoned out of residential neighborhoods, and then there was a big policy change at state level at some point to kinda try to integrate these folks into the community as much as possible and into residential. So that's the problem that I'm having, and I think, am I right in terms of the kind of the history here?
You're correct. The goal before the Homestead Act is to move everybody away from institutions, psychiatric institution like CFP or kind of a psychiatric home, okay? And to bring them into community. And if you look at that area, you're more familiar with the area than I am, you look at that area, and you still have some residential, it's a mission use. It's not, even though it's a commercial, you still have a mission use where you are some residents, and you have some other things going on. But we are not going against the intention of the federal government to say, okay, you can have a six-bed facility anywhere in the U.S. So you've got a section which is gonna be a six-bed for six people that satisfy that. The other section is, this is gonna be divided into two separate units, the other side will be six units. So it's not turning to commercial, and it's not turning to institution, because each home is gonna have a different license, each of the units, they have a different license. So they can manage it that way, to still comply with the Homestead Act, to still comply with federal rehabilitation act. So that is the thinking process behind this. I mean, you know, I've been doing this probably for over 30 years, and this is passion for me, and this gives me a lot of time to do more research into this. I'm not just going to anybody's city and say, okay, let's do this. And, you know, we do it, we do it in Lansing, we do it in Fondue, we do it in Grand Blank. So compliance with the rules is very, very essential, and we did our due diligence to make sure we comply with the federal rehabilitation law. We also do our due diligence, that's why I have a full-time architect who's also an engineer that is working with the, I mean, the Township of Grand Blank, to make sure we're in compliance. We've been doing this for months. I mean, we're holding up everything so we can make sure we fully comply with the requirement of Grand Blank Township. The issue that Ms. Coulter is raising, this used to be a residential facility. It used to be a duplex, and we are not doing anything different than that. Let's talk about why we're moving those people away from institution, moving them back into the community. That's why it's separate. These are separate entities. You have one section dealing with this set of clients, you take house management, managing it, and you've got a set of units, the second unit dealing with this set of clients. They are operated individually. You couldn't go there owned by two people. In order to comply with the federal act, and in order to comply with Grand Blank Township Act or the land use, that was why we went to that decision. We were just gonna make it an open ending, but we said, no, we're gonna get into trouble. Why don't we do it this way? And that's why we went to that, and also to uphold, you know, to uphold the Homestead Act, instead of institutionalizing these people, everybody wanted to live in community. And I've been running this for a while, and that is very important to me, that we need to take good care of this group. I've got a brother with mental illness. So this is like something that I went into. My profession, our profession is completely different than this. So this is me giving back to make sure none of these people live in institution or psychiatric center, they live in the home just like me. And I shared with the, some of the team members, the last time, the planning team, you know, what we've turned some houses to. You know, this is, our philosophy is, if I care living late, I'm not gonna put any of my clients in it. We're going to make it a top stand at home for our client, and we're also going to be good citizens abiding by the township rules. I mean, we have several of these in place, township, I mean, place just generally, and, you know, we've been doing well.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I got, I guess, a procedural question. Do we need to make any motion contingent upon approval of a site plan?
You don't, you wanna...
Yes, you should.
Because isn't this separate, and the site plan is separate?
The special land use?
I think you don't wanna get in the position, you get a special land use approved, and then the site plan doesn't get approved, right?
Right. The special land use is required to have a site plan go with it, so that would make sense to have your motion contingent on the approval of a site plan.
Anyone else like to speak for you on this one? No further discussion? If not, vote is in order, do we want to do individual? You need a motion, right? Motion for vote? I'll make the motion to approve.
Well, special land use 22-006 with the stipulation that it's, the site plan is attached.
It's contingent upon...
Contingent. Yeah, contingent on site plan.
So we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, support by Mr. Banderski. Sounds like, Mr. Bush, you have some additional discussion?
Just a, maybe a friendly amendment to also include Jeremy's comments in the approval, the reason for approval.
Good point.
Thank you.
I presume both of you accept that?
Yes.
Any other further discussion? All right, I think we'll just, we'll do an individual roll call vote. Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Mr. Yacho?
Yes.
Ms. Coulter?
No.
Mr. Banderski?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Gellings also votes yes. Motion passes 6-1. You've made it another step, anyway.
Thank you, guys. I have everyone's cooperation, and, well, like I said, I'm not gonna do many bits, I would say, I've always appreciated his townships, you know, for welcoming to us, continuing to us. So thank you very much.
All right, feel free to leave, or you can stick around, whatever you'd like to do. We will go back to item 6B on our agenda.
Take your homes. It was the first one.
Ms. Banderski? Do you want us? Okay, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I was a little bit late. Isn't, it's green.
Okay.
Maybe I'm just not close enough to it? Oh, sorry about that. So we have three ordinance amendments that we discussed at our September meeting. The first of these is amendment definitions for family and group daycare homes, and that was to update the language to refer to state law. So as you may recall, at the last meeting, we discussed changes that were made by the state of Michigan to allow some family and group childcare home facilities to have an additional child. So instead of changing the ordinance to another number, we just changed the definition to be consistent with state law.
Any discussion? Doesn't look like, I think we might do this one pretty well before...
Public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing. So we will open this up to the public. Anyone would like to comment? Seeing none, we're...
I did this for you guys.
Sorry. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to Planning Commission. Any other discussion? We just need a vote to...
Recommend Township Board approval and adoption.
Someone like to make that motion? Are we calling these all the same zoning case?
Yeah, did you have a zoning case number? We didn't have that.
It's 674.C. This is, we're just kinda lumping them to, each date, whatever we do in a public hearings, we're just gonna...
Do you wanna see if we get, just do one time, or you wanna do it three times?
Let's do it three times.
Move for approval, as written.
Recommend approval.
Recommendation to the Township Board for approval by Mr., motion by Mr. Bush, support by Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next one.
Next one is, I think, going back to my, I guess it doesn't really matter. Off-street parking space design standards. So this was a continuation of a, of an ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission and Township Board completed a couple of months ago, and this was to align some new design standards for the size of parking spaces, thinking that perhaps parking spaces weren't wide enough given the larger vehicles of today. And so I think we had some of those changes initially. The proposal was to update the table to make it more consistent, 30 to 53 degrees of parking spaces typically what we see, it's generally parallel 45, 60, or 90. So just updating that, updating the maneuvering lane widths, the parking space width and length. We've got a graphic there in the attachment. And then the only thing that I would follow up on that with, and we talked about this last month, was that since we're making the parking spaces bigger, that means we're making the parking lots bigger, which might be something that we wanna look at from a stormwater management, a sustainability issue down the road. We may wanna revisit and decide whether we want to lower any of the parking standards so that instead of increasing the size of parking lots, along with the spaces, that maybe we can decrease the size of the parking lots in the future.
That's not currently part of the... Slam dunk? Okay. So we'll open up the public hearing again, and this is regarding the parking space layout. It's still part of the zoning case 674.C. No one would like to speak, it looks like, so we'll close public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission.
What's our zoning case number in this one? 674?
Approval to Township Board?
Oh, they're all C? Okay.
Motion by Mr. Bush, support by Mr. Yacho. All right, vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
All right, we're on a roll here with our third and final public hearing and ordinance amendment tonight. This one was involving the monument signs in proximity of the interstate highway, specifically I-75, in industrial zoning districts, to allow the maximum sign area... the maximum sign area to be increased to no more than a hundred and fifty square feet, up to ten feet in height for industrial zone properties. Um, and then allow that same, uh, four wall signs. Um, this is within three hundred feet of I-75, uh, and in, for a wall sign, have a maximum sign area of up to a hundred square feet. And we didn't really make any changes from September.
The normal wall sign's thirty-two, correct?
Um, I think it's sixty-four.
Yeah, I believe sixty-four is right.
Well, I guess I'm remembering farther back. Any other comments?
I have a, I have a question. Um, I think it makes sense to have the same, um, kind of height, certainly for monument signs as well as wall signs that are within three hundred feet of I-75, but I'm just wondering, what's the rationale for just increasing the, um, size for industrials, industrials-owned properties? I mean, why are we kind of giving them extra, um, consideration here?
Mr. Smith?
So with the Grand Black Enterprise Park and Tech Village, um, knowing that both of those are going to, um, explode in the next few years, if you will, Tech, Grand Black Enterprise Park is already, has a few businesses already in there. And they're asking for, uh, more exposure, uh, from seventy-five. As you well know, the speed limit's seventy through there, but we know nobody goes seventy through there. So they're hoping that having larger signs, they can have more exposure off the highway.
So this applies to industrial only if you get a general commercial?
Yeah, right.
Correct. Industrial only.
That's my question. Why are we giving them special consideration? And then while my other concern is, you got to draw the line somewhere, you know. I mean, if, a year or two from now, somebody's probably going to come in and want to go up to twelve feet or fifteen feet or whatever. I mean, it just, and it also seems to me that the importance of signs along highways is becoming less important because everybody uses Google Maps and, you know, internet to figure out where they're going or where they want to find a restaurant or a gas station or whatever. Um, anyway, my concern.
Any other comments? Mr. Bush?
I'm going to take a stab at why we need them bigger. Um, an industrial building probably is anywhere from five to ten times the size of a regular commercial building. I mean, if you're going to build a Myers, okay, that's going to be about the same size, but most commercial buildings aren't that big. So if you put a sixty-four square foot sign on a little building and you put a sixty-four foot sign on a building ten times that size, you're not even going to see it. So I think that the reasoning behind it is they're larger buildings, therefore they get a little bit bigger.
More proportional?
Yep. And I think it looks better, too. I mean, you put something small in a big building and it just doesn't look right. Look at the McLaren Building we just built several years back, and that's, that's a large sign, larger than normal, but it fits.
That was through a variance process?
Right, yeah, right. It was through a variance, but it, it's appropriate for that size of a building.
Anyone else want to comment? All right, we've got to go to the public on this one as well, right? Signage?
Sure.
You open the pu.
I can't just.
I was wondering.
Uh, Lelaine Kilborn, mailing address is three-one-zero-three West Thompson, road number one-eighty-two, Fenton, Michigan. Um, my only concern is you get going down the expressways and you'll see, you know, it, it just start to, to develop and overdevelop and it just then continues on up the expressway forever and ever. And I kind of like to think Grand Black Township were a little bit different. Um, and we don't want to do mass commercial and mass, uh, industrial. Um, my concern is when you said it was going to be, these will be exploding in the near future with all the buildings. So now if you're giving them all larger signs and there's going to be a lot of them, it's just going to look really busy through there. And that's something I'd like to see, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Doesn't look like we have anyone else that would like to comment. So we'll close, close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Any other discussion? Response? No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we recommend approval to the Township Board.
All right, for the signage revisions that would be along, uh, I-75. Any other, is there support for that?
A support.
Support by, uh, I don't know why I went blank in that, but Ms. Hugo?
[laughing]
Gosh. Any other discussion? All right, we'll listen carefully. Um, vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'm opposed, and I just want to state for the record, it has to do with the increasing the maximum sign. Two hundred fifty square feet, um, for industrial zoned properties. Um, the rest of it, I don't have a problem.
He's making a note right now. Thank you. All right, motion passes six-one, is the way I heard it. Thank you. All right, so take us to committee reports. Zoning Board of, uh, well, let's go to the Township Board first.
I do not have anything to report.
That's why we went there.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Uh, nothing to report. We kind of reviewed it tonight.
Um, we were going to try to do some more discussion tonight, but, um, well, next month we'll have more discussion so we can, uh, there's not many more. Um, I don't know off the top of my head what the exact numbers of amendments that we originally discussed is left, but there's not many. Um, probably just a handful. We're trying to have this all wrapped up by the first of the year. Um, so that way we can get all new books start of the year and, uh, move forward that way. We can always do amendments down the road, but there's some things that need to be integrated, like sign ordinance and the solar ordinance and things like that, that we want to have integrated in there in the proper location, so.
Site plan review, site plan. I don't think we've, we've had anything in the last thirty days. This one was at the same time as the Planning Commission.
Correct, yep. And then, like I said, you'll have, if this one comes, Eden Prairie, we'll do that at Site Plan Review Committee.
Anyone have anything else?
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion.
Yes.
Jeremy, could you, uh, fill us in on, uh, what's, uh, happening at the Dag Industries building? What are, what are they building?
Which, which location?
Uh, Enterprise Park.
Oh, uh, they're, they have to do with the, um, it's more of a Dennis question. They didn't, they haven't, uh, told me exactly what's going to be done there, but I know they deal in the automotive industry.
Thank you.
It's mostly storage at the Enterprise Park one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, I will make a motion that we adjourn at seven forty.
Do we have to wait another minute?
Seven forty-nine.
Motion by, we'll, we'll talk slowly. Motion by Mr. Banderski to adjourn. The support for that?
Support.
Support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, we adjourn. Thanks.